We'd like to welcome you to our budget hearing tonight. Thank you, all of you, for coming and being a part of it. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will excuse Valerie tonight. And I haven't heard yet from Alan. Maybe he's just running a little bit late. Anyways, we'll go ahead and move... Oh, do we have any? Oh, no. And we'll go ahead and go with the budget presentation.
Okay. Hope we have the updated one online. Jackie's nodding yes, so... Because I did make a few tweaks to it last minute as we... I had a few people review it and pointed out some things we needed to update. But the first... I know there's 22 slides, so it looks long. We'll get through it much quicker. I did leave the original one in there that we talked about just two weeks ago. So... But I did make some changes. And even though I'm going to fly through those first few slides, I just wanted to tell you what we updated just because I thought it'd be best that we clear some things up. Okay. Good. So on that first slide, when it... We talked about the overall highlights. I just... Under the expenses area, I just wanted to clarify the negotiations since that came up last time. So I put in there that it includes the TEA negotiated increase and then the other agreements. And I say that because we met with other employee groups, but they weren't formal negotiations. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear because of our discussion last time. But really, that was the major change to that one. The next thing I wanted to point out under general fund expenditures, it was the same thing, just to clarify that language in there, under salaries and benefits, about meeting with... In the less formal process, so. There was actually no other changes until we got to food service. And in there, I had originally in the first slide included that they received three levels or two levels for cooks. When I got reviewing our notes, it was actually three. So I apologize for that. There was a... I did not get that updated in the last one. So what we had talked about was three-level increases on those... On cooks. And unless you have a question, I'll just keep moving on. Because the next one was on our property tax increase. As you recall, in there, I had talked about... I had estimated that originally that we would... Could receive 5.4 million if we kept the flat tax rate that we're going to talk about here in a bit. I way overestimated that. It was closer, as you saw in the notes, to 1.6 million. So that was kind of a mental note to myself to make sure I checked that a little bit better next year instead of taking the full growth throughout the county and just multiplying it by that rate that we need to look at the difference, you know, in the certified and which we were missing some factors. As you recall, last time, there were some estimates in there. We did have those final two levies have been set, the charter school levy and the basic levy are now finalized and so we can finalize our rates, which is what we're here to discuss. So with that being said, we'll jump into the new part of presentation. And I just wanted to go over our... The certified tax rate, just a quick review of that. Some of you have probably heard this in the past. It'll be reviewed for some and maybe new for others. But when we talk about property taxes, they're unique to me. I always say "unique" and I talk about that every year because they're... They are revenue-driven, not rate-driven. And so the actual formula for this certified tax rate is that they want to... The logic behind it, if... As you go to trainings from the state perspective is that they want to be able to generate the same revenue as they have in prior years. So... Well, welcome, Alan. Good to see you. So because it's driven that way, you can see the formula there is revenue divided by the value. And when I say "value," that's the assessed valuation throughout the whole county. That's how they back into the rate. What's the rate going to be? And the reason I point that out is because when we talk about a tax decrease, sometimes depending on which tax you're talking about, I'm more used to when we talk about income taxes and other taxes that are rate-driven. Sometimes you'll hear the legislature or somebody who's talking about a tax cut, they're talking about changing the rate, so reducing the percentage in that. Sometimes, if you're, you know, in a class, you'll hear that they believe that that lowering taxes can stimulate economies and bring in... They believe that it'll actually generate more revenue as the rate falls because of economic growth sometimes. Well, because this one is revenue-driven, going back to that, it's kind of interesting. As the values throughout the county increase, the rate is actually going to drop because this one isn't rate-based. So which happens in good years. Speaking of a good economy, you know, is... As the... As we continue to see new growth, new buildings, even increase in valuations throughout the county, we would expect to see the certif... The rate drop when they talk about the certified rate. That's what would generate the same revenue. I need to add the caveat in there, less new growth. And that was one of the things in my formula before is I got... I forgot to exclude the new growth in that that I talked about because what they want to do that... What they want to do is back out the new growth from that and look at just the valuation. The logic in the legislative mind is the value of the properties throughout the county, the certified rate should be the same on an individual property as it was a year before. That's why they subtract the new growth, meaning that if all the growth in the county was for these particular properties, you should be paying the same taxes you would in a prior year. So that's the logic of the reason they back out new growth and the certified tax rate. I point that out because keeping the certified tax rate does mean that in the next year, when that new growth is on the books, that it does grow, if you're curious. A little bit over time, revenues can grow with a certified tax rate. And actually, the opposite is true, as you see on there, as... And I think I've only seen this once in my time here with the 12th County School District, but there is a possibility that values will... Could decline in a year. And if that's the case, the rate will actually go up. The rate will naturally float up as the values in that case decrease, you know. So usually, that takes a recession or something for that to drop, but it has happened in the past. So in the past, we've talked about keeping a strategy where we talk about a flat rate. I view that as a flat rate because our rate doesn't change. And I have been in enough meetings with Jennifer from the State Tax Commission, who when she presents on this, I can tell it's a pet peeve in her mind because she gets constituents calling in and saying, "Well, I hear from a certain entity out there that they're not raising taxes because the rate is the same as it was a year before." And she gets upset at that because in her mind, and as I point this out, in their minds, the way this was designed, it is asking for new revenue. Because as assessed valuations go up, if you keep the rate the same, that is more revenue for the district. And so they view it as a tax increase. And that's why we have the rules in place for truth and taxation and those processes. So that was just a quick review of the... Of the certified tax rate and briefly got into truth and taxation. So what you'll see presented later when we actually get to the 22 budget, I've put two versions of the budget in there. One is with no tax increase. That is the certified rate when we talk about it. That if I actually go back to that slide... Okay, it's in two ago. It actually had that rate as .009296, which is lower than the 9565 it has been in prior years. So that's what that first version is. The second version, which you're just seeing today, we didn't have enough information the last time. I said I was going to bring back another one, would be the flat tax, as I like to call it, the flat tax increase. What would that do? Well, as you can see in there, as far as revenues, and I also put in here expenditures because I like to have a zero... Zero balance in budgeting when we do that. It increased by 1.625 million. Now, when we get into the property tax, there's actually different levies, as you know, and so they can go to different funds. And that's why I broke it out in there, the three funds that it goes to. Because as we start to make these... All these... All the revenue we receive from property tax, we allocate based on these percentages. So as one levy goes up, it changes the percent that goes to a given fund. So with that 1.625, I took it by levy and actually broke it out amongst the funds there. And you can see that, sure, there's some that goes to the general fund. There's a little bit that goes to debt service. And you can see my notes on there where we put the offsetting expenditures, but the majority of it is going to go to capital projects. That's the one levy that we have a lot of room for growth, if you want to put it that way. And so in this proposed... This proposed flat tax increase, that's where the majority of the revenue is going. Then I wanted to talk about the two versions. So I did my best to come up with some pros and cons. If we're looking at the no-tax increase, the budget that's in front of you, what are some of the pros on that? Well, you can see the three things I listed there about it being easy. It doesn't require truth and taxation. We still have enough to meet all the goals that we had listed in those earlier slides that were built into the base budget. And the key thing I wanted to point out is that raises... You know, we talked about some additional amounts being added to the... Potentially to the salary schedule at our last meeting. It's the first time I presented it to you. And I wanted to point out the pros, that the raises aren't contingent upon us going through truth and taxation. They were built into that one. So I view that as a pro in this case. The cons, if we choose to go... If we choose to go that road, the cons, the only thing I can think of is... Because of that 1.48 million in capital projects, I just had a laundry list of things that we've talked about doing, you know. Of course, that means less than the capital project fund, but as you know, we can't do everything on there. So these are just some lists of... And I'm sure you can think of things that I've forgotten here, you know, whether that be a turf field or X, Y. There's... You know, there's a laundry list of things we can do with capital projects. So those are just some that I've heard over the past week. As far as the flat tax increase, those cons on one is going to be the pros to this one. It generates new revenue for capital projects and, of course, that's that laundry list I was referring to earlier. When I talk about the truth and taxation process, you know, that's something we've been through before. I don't want it to scare you for those maybe who haven't been through the process before. Maybe you've heard about it. But it is a... It's just additional steps that we've done. And I point that out because technically, the board could decide to go through truth and taxation and still, at the end of the day, choose to not to raise taxes. It's just a process that we have a public hearing. People can come in like we're going to have today. But the difference is this one will be advertised. So they will be aware of what the tax increase would be. They have a chance to come and address the board, and then you make a final decision after the hearing. So that's kind of the things on that. So when it... That leads me into the setting of the rate, the tax rate, because that's what I view in these budgets, is we're ultimately adopting... Not only are we adopting this budget for next year to begin our operations, but we're also setting the rate. And so underneath that, I put two bullet points because these two don't require us to go through truth and taxation that we've talked about. Of course, the certified tax rate, that's generating the same revenues in prior years. Again, I have the amount in there. That doesn't require us to go through truth and taxation. So if we adopt, in this case, the no-tax increase budget this year, we know with the certified... We're going to go with the certified rate at the minute. Now, if there is a conversation about lowering taxes or, in this case, a revenue cut, you know, which I'm going to talk about that later, version three, we discussed that a bit, that is an option and, of course, wouldn't require truth and taxation either. And that one, we would want to know... We would back into the rate we were going to set. And I'll show you how we can... We'll do that a little bit later on. Now, when it comes to tax increases, and that could be anywhere from, you know, the 1.6 we're talking about to keep the rate flat, or you could go up to the maximum levies if you want. You could even go higher. But anything above that certified rate is going to require a truth and taxation hearing. I've only presented a flat tax because that's what we've done in the past. That's how we've traditionally have sold and talked about... Advertize that, I guess, to the public is the flat tax rate. But that's not saying there is... That it couldn't ever go higher. It's just an option out on the table, so. And then the bottom bullet point I had on there, which you're probably aware of, is we actually can't... Cannot set that rate at this meeting because we have to have a public hearing for that. That's why we do it in August if... After the public hearing, if we go down that road. So as part of this, I wanted to talk about those... Those proposed salary increases that I talked about last time, just to give you a little more information on it. I know we talked about it last time, and I probably didn't give you the full story. So I'm hoping to do that a little bit more today in case you have some questions. And you can see the amounts that we talked about in there. The second part, I put that in there more for my benefit that it would be nice to actually have that discussion of whether the board approves this or not because I admit, it was my idea. I mean, I ran it by superintendent. When we talk about administrative idea, it was ours and we... And it would be much better if it was, in my opinion, board-approved rather than our idea. But the bottom line on there is it was 3 million of ongoing money, and that's what I wanted to talk about. Where did this 3 million of ongoing money come from? And so I tried to get detailed in my explanation there. I won't read it word for word, but you can see that after we had completed negotiations with TEA and meeting with other groups and in the budget process, that's when I really felt strong and I wanted to double-check that I wasn't wrong here. But we wanted to make sure that we felt like there was $3 million of ongoing funds that we... That were available. And as... And through that process, I just... I felt like there were, that we could... It presented a unique opportunity. And you can see on this... Let's see here. I believe I had it on that slide. Okay, I'm jumping ahead. That it was actually in the May 27 timeline. Of course, we could do... You know, what could we do with that $3 million? As you can see on this slide, there's a... There's definitely things we could have done. We could have actually waited a year and potentially looked at that. But and you can see my middle one there. In hindsight, maybe I should have talked about it. But in my rush, I thought if there was ever a year to actually add this potentially to salary schedules, even after we had already completed negotiations, I thought this was the year. And my logic is is because... And I'll actually get into that in this next one about it being sustainable. Sorry, it was a... I should have reversed these slides now as I'm looking at it. But I did feel that it was ongoing money. And why can we be that aggressive? You can see, we still have an additional 3 million that we've set aside for the opening of these schools. I felt like that was enough of a buffer that we could look at it this year. And then the last thing I put on there is probably more for superintendent, but for those who are curious, is I actually didn't include that increase in this negotiation report we gave to the state. So those numbers that other districts are looking at, comparing what have they done to ours, did not actually include this additional money I was referring to. It was what we had originally negotiated and the agreement with the employee groups. So... Any questions up to this point before I move on to what I call version three, which I haven't officially created one and put it in there for you, but we can definitely do that if you want to talk about it today. But version three, as we talked about last time, what would a tax cut be? And again, because this is revenue-driven, it boiled down to how much would we... Would we like to cut, is a good way of putting it. Of course, this one, we would hope that if we go down this road, you know, when you take the certified tax rate, nothing's ever advertised, you know, your revenue is the same. If you're going to actually cut taxes, it would be nice to get word out there because, you know, we have to advertise a... An increase, a truth and taxation increase. So wouldn't it be nice if we went down this road to have that? And I point that out because if Tim were here, we would hope, you know... We'd hope that Marie and him could work out a deal. Maybe it would get printed somehow to get word out. But long story short, it would actually be a good... If something that good could be printed, we would definitely want it to happen. And so I... As you can see, I pointed out there, in order to do that, I didn't know what to start with, so I just used the $3 million, just... I'm not saying it's this, and please don't tie it to that this is... Don't say that it's contingent. This additional money I'm talking about is contingent upon... Because version three could be whatever you want. But if it... If in this case, we found like we... We wanted to use the $3 million example that I used earlier. And let's say we decided to cut taxes by that 3 million. And of course, it could be a million or two. And that's why I want to make sure we don't connect it to those raises. But that could be a possibility. And so backing into the rate, you take that $3 million, whatever it ends... You end up deciding it could even be a million. And then all these numbers, you'd have to just divide by three. But you divide it by the valuation, which I have in there. And you can see that it would result in approximately a .00552 decrease in the levy. And using that logic, as soon as you have those numbers, then you can back into what we would advertise or you'd expect to see in a truth and taxation hearing, which I've been using the $300,000 estimate. I'm still waiting from the county on what an average home is here. That could be high or low. I don't know at this point. I haven't officially heard from them. But if that's a good number, you can see the dollar figures in there on a residence and a business valued at those amounts. So that's what version three would entail in a nutshell, so.
Lark, I have a question.
Yeah.
Isn't it quite possible, though, that, I mean, if you went in this direction, that's assuming that the residence values at the same level, right? Because it is possible for when we either adopt the certified tax rate or even lower it, that someone would see more on their tax notice if the corresponding market increase from the county was more dollar-wise than the... So I'm just saying, in the past, we've gone to the certified tax rate and said, "Gosh, we lowered the tax rate." And we've had comments from the community that "You increased my taxes." And that was more of a function of the multiplier of the assessed value than it was our rate. Isn't that correct? So it is possible that we couldn't promise... I mean, that $91 on a residence, if it was still valued at that same level, would be true, but that's not likely to be true because the valuations are going up so high, right?
And I think what you just said is why I had asked in the last meeting about what we could possibly... You know, and just ask you to throw that number together roughly because the reality is, somebody's house, if it's valued at 300,000 on their tax statement, it probably was at two and a quarter last year or something, right? And so I don't know exactly what it was, but I mean, it's gone up significantly over the last 12 months. And so by decreasing that 91, it might come closer to what they had paid last year on their... Well, they're still probably going to see more, but... And that was kind of my point of just at least asking for that, acknowledging that from an individual's point of view, they would be paying the same amount out of pocket or approximately... Potentially approximately that same amount just because their house is worth now 300. And, you know, on any one individual, maybe, but some of these folks, I mean, for a small business, that starts to become substantial for, you know, folks that own a bit more property and those kind of things. It becomes... And even, I guess we should even discount, even for small individuals who are on fixed incomes and those things, that becomes significant. And that's why I at least wanted to bring that up and say, I know the idea of cutting taxes is a little appealing, but the point was, maybe we're not really cutting taxes, but we're holding steady to that same house, to that same person. Maybe their taxes could come close. I bet it still goes up just because how much they've increased. But that was my thought process. So thank you for at least doing some math.
Oh, no problem. That helped. And those are two very good points. You're right, every individual property is going to be unique. And so that's why individual taxpayers usually wait until they have the, you know, the valuation statement from the county to see exactly what happened to their property. Now, those who have been here long enough, like Scott and Julia, know that in the past, I've mentioned and I was taught years ago that they used to, at one point, go around and do a fifth of the property. So when we would have these conversations in a year, we'd talk about, well, a fifth of the county somewhere has been revalued and they're going to come in because their properties went up higher than everybody else and they're going to come in. And that's what we would look at. Yeah. And I wanted to point out, because I had a good conversation with Scott earlier, that that's no longer the case. You know, now I'm hearing that counties throughout the state are getting more detailed and, you know, as values increase, they have better software and everything. And they're starting to increase valuations much more often. As a matter of fact, if you've probably looked at your own... If you have a three-year history, you've probably noticed your property tax going up every single year, not just once every five like it used to be when it was looked at. So that is changing. I just wanted to point that out. It's now being looked at much more often. And because I said, a lot of them are formula-driven, they're being ratcheted up every year. But in theory, as you know, that whenever they advertise, they look at that average value throughout the county. And what you can say realistically is that people who fit in, happen to have a property valued at that, would expect to see that large of a tax cut in this case. If it were advertised or a business, of course, yeah, there'll be people with higher, there'll be people with lower. They're obviously just formula-driven on that. But this is what we can say an average taxpayer would expect to see. So any further questions on version three? If not, and I'm sorry to throw this in there, but since we won't be able to talk in a while, I just wanted to give you some information on SRR3. It came up last time. You can see the amounts in there. Actually, we're expecting to receive 7.5 million from SRR3. So you can also see that we have until... It's not that we have to spend that right now, till 2023, but I wanted to point that out because when I... What's that?
Just kidding.
Okay. So we do have some time on that, but it's something we're going to need to come up with a plan on how to spend that money. But this is what I just wanted to show you because that's much larger than we received from the first two rounds of SRR funds or CARES, as a lot of people know it. That's coming our way. And I point that out because it's not included in our budget. And I mentioned that sometimes when we get one-time federal funds, we wait until we actually have the budget and we add it in our working ones. So we would plan to do that in this case when we... We would plan to do that in this case when we when everything gets finalized, but. With that, I just wanted to see if. Because this was my time at least to bring up those versions there, hopefully I've addressed your questions, but if not, this is our time to do it, because as you know. We have a public hearing for those who who wanted to comment on the budgets, and then after that. The next two items are 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 budget related, and I want to make sure you've given enough information to help you in. And those what's presented before you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
The E S S R funds, I know you said the amounts, but are there restrictions with them? That you know of?
I have not heard back, because I I know you, last time we had a conversation about can it be used for capital? I've actually not heard the final word on that.
Okay.
But. Hopefully we will, we will in the in the grant details, I know that the state. Was what I was told is they were looking at opening that up, because again, the federal government has their restrictions and the state can further restrict it, and that's where in one and two. Is the state actually further restricted it, but three, I've I've heard they're open to it, but I haven't heard the final word.
Great, thank you.
Matter of fact, if anybody went to that. Special session where it was discussed, you might be more up to date than I am, but I know it was addressed at the last special session, special session of the legislature, so.
All right, Lark, I have a question, and it's more procedure. When we have this publicly, the public hearing, don't we actually have to formally? Open it as a public hearing and close it, I I mean, if I recall. It's not noted here in the agenda, but it it seemed like in the past, it actually required. The board president say we're have we're opening it. And and it's not in the notes here, and I, Melissa, you haven't probably been through enough, I just was thinking that. And it's not here, so it's more of a procedure question, but isn't that required that we formally open?
When I opened the board meeting, I called it a public, I called it a, oh, I just called it a budget, a public, a budget hearing. But.
I don't know, I just want to make sure we're compliant to the law, and that's.
Yeah, that's my understanding is it has to be advertised, I believe we've advertised it that way, but it might be a good idea just to do what you did and make sure we we open it up.
And it doesn't require a motion and a open to open and close that, or no? If it does, I'm more than happy, I just want to be procedurally correct on that.
Golly, I'm trying to recall, I don't think it did, but.
I'm not out.
It wouldn't hurt, but I don't think it's required, I think leadership can, since it was posted properly, but it wouldn't hurt to make a motion.
So I'm not in the field, at least. Okay.
Yeah.
Either way, I just want to make sure we're procedurally and legally compliant, that's all I was asking.
That's good, good question. I'm actually gonna review our prior years to see if we had some notes in there. Or Jackie unless Jackie.
I know when we're. To open, okay.
In the past, the president has just said that it's open, but we have had motions to close it.
You really opened it when you started the meeting, and this is just the first. Bob's probably the best parliamentarian.
You do have to close it. At after any public input or after, you know, when you're done with the hearing part, you do have to close it, but I don't believe you have to open it because it's already posted on your agenda and it's been advertised as a public hearing.
Should we move on to the next bud, the next item, which is the budget public hearing? Do we have any public comments signed up?
It in the door just walked the public, so.
So with that in mind, and based on our conversation, then I would motion that we close the public hearing. On the 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 budget public hearing.
I need a second. It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Julie to close the. Budget public hearing. All in favor? I, any opposed? Okay, next up is four point oh one, final budget adoption fiscal year twenty twenty one. Lark. I think you're the star of the show today.
Today, that's right, I better pay attention. Now, for, as you know, that throughout the year, I've mentioned, we have adopted the budget that we originally. That the board adopted last year, and we haven't formally amended that, and so we've brought forward all the, I call it the working budget, but all those final. Those changes we make throughout the year. And what we have presented before you for fiscal year twenty one is is what we would recommend as a final budget, happens to be our our working budget for. These purposes, so unless you have any questions about anything in there, I think we have a, you know, a four year history there, well. Two year history of of actual numbers, and then you have the beginning budget in the third column of what we adopted a year ago at this time. And and the final column is what we would be our proposed final budget for fiscal year twenty one.
So I'll motion that we adopt the proposed final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Camille. To approve the final or to approve the final budget adoption for fiscal year twenty twenty one, is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor? I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, budget atop adoption fiscal year twenty twenty two.
And this is the one I wanted to make sure everybody had enough questions asked, because I actually put both one, both versions in there. As I said, we could even have a a third one if you if you want to discuss it here. And we could make some changes to it pretty quick, but the the two that are there being presented is, of course, the one that. No tax increase at the certified tax rate, and the second one would be our our flat tax, keeping it at point zero zero nine five six five. And unless you have any questions, I I think it's really. I know this is the fun part, I'm just saying, I've I've told this to others when they look at, you know, I tell them that you know your constituents best, and this is really a. A question about. Which of the two you prefer?
With, well, and and I'm not prepared to make a motion or anything, but I do have a question, or I guess I have a concern. And my concern is, I, you know, I understand the certified tax rate, I've been doing a lot of research and. Asking questions and and everything, and I also understand the proposed budget with the flat tax increase, but my concern is. Is if you go to the certified rate and it floats down, then you're really not capturing any of the growth. That we are that we're experiencing in the in the community. And one of the concerns that I have with that is we've been asked to be, you know, let's, you know, plan, have a budget that plans, and how do we handle growth? And if we're if we're allowing it to float down, how are we really handling growth if we're not capturing the growth? Is my concern, because and and I understand that, you know, if it increases or decreases, I understand all the scenarios, but the scenario. That I keep thinking about is, okay, we we let it float down with a certified tax rate this year, but then. Two years from now or a year from now, we have to increase it, we're going, you're going to be doubling. The increase that you're just about in in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, but you could be doubling the increase. That you're asking the people next year if you have to go back to the flat rate at that point in time. And, you know, and I understand, I've I've looked at my evaluation, Scott, I've looked at everybody's, you know, what my property evaluation and a lot of others has moved up to. But how do we, how do we manage growth if we don't capture the growth in the in the property taxes?
Can I get a question, Bob, because I understood exactly what you did. Until Lark said something in this meeting today. And and I need to clear, I need to understand, because Bob, I understood exactly what you did. But Lark, when you were presenting. Just a couple minutes, I can't turn quick enough to the slide that you said it on, but you said. The certified rate. Not counting the growth. That that's what you said, which. Is a little bit different than what Bob said, and I previously understood it the way Bob just described it. And so can Lark, could you, and do you know what I'm saying, could I, or do I need to go back and find the slide that where you said that?
No, that's fine, I I don't know that I specifically have it spelled out on the slide, but. If you go to the tax website, you'll see that they actually do exclude new growth in the certified tax rate. And what the logic is, if there was actually new a new building in there, I, maybe I worded it poorly, but I. I believe their intent is that. Granted, we have all these things that values are going up and these moving parts to the formula, but if you could exclude those, is what I'm saying, that your home was the same value as it was. Last year is this year, my understanding of the certified tax rate is that it should be the same amount you would pay, that your taxes would not go up.
Keeping it really simple, from my simple mind, there's one house in our whole tax roll, and it generated a hundred dollars. And Bob moved into town and he built a house next to mine, so now we have two houses in town. If we adopted the certified rate. Would my taxes still be a hundred and Bob's be a hundred, or would my taxes go to fifty and Bob beat fifty because we're now paying a hundred total?
Now, the intent would be the the hundred dollars in your example, because Bob would be excluded because it was new.
So we both would pay a hundred the next year? Or we both pay fifty, does that make sense?
Oh, and the next year, then.
The second year, because Bob's new, the first year one, it was Scott's house, and he has a, he's paying a hundred dollars in taxes. Bob moves into town and he builds next door, and now we're the same equal house. Are we, but on in year two, are we both paying a hundred dollars, or are we both paying fifty? And I always thought. What Bob did, that we would both, our tax rate would be fifty each, because the certified rate would generate a hundred. That's my clarifying question.
Gotcha, it would, the way I understand is because they back out the new growth in in that year, I did a poor job, because they. It's actually, you'd both pay a hundred.
In year two.
In year one.
No, year one, he wasn't here.
I I get that, okay, and you're, if you're using that logic, if it wasn't built that year, but the year it's built. That value was taken out of the formula so that you would continue to pay your hundred dollars. And the year he actually has to, the first year he's assessed valuation, that is new revenue to the district, that is another, that's in your example, a hundred dollars new to the district. Because of the new growth.
So Bob, is that, you see, that that changes a little bit what you said, and.
But I still don't think you, and 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 that's where I'm asking the question, I still don't think you recoup the entire amount by allowing it to float down. Because, you know, and 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 I guess my concern is, is, you know, I look at, I look at the list on the one slide of the warehouse and all the. The laundry list there, and we have all these extra expenses, I also know, you know, and talking and being. Involved in some of the construction bids and things like that, the inflation that we're facing there and 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 reading the different articles that I've read from other districts. Of being over budget on buildings because of just the building costs are, you know, inflating. And and my concern is, is, is if you don't capture it now, then then a year from now or whenever, you're going to come back and you're going to say, well, we've got to raise that rate now. And and you're almost doubling what you're going to ask him to raise, you know, what they're going to be paying at that point in time, anyway, the my, just in my mind, that's. What I'm thinking, you know, and so.
So I, this is a question for Lark to clarify that with Bob, because I thought the same thing, it's like, people have said, oh, well. The city didn't raise taxes for twenty seven years, so then they raised it and it was like a balloon. I thought if we don't, and I've only been on two years, and so when. We didn't do it one year and then we were gonna do it, we just lose the captured growth the year that we don't do it. But then the next year, it's not, it doesn't balloon, it's just we capture that year's growth, is that? Right, because I don't want it to balloon either, we need to keep up. Am I, Scott, is that?
That's a fair question, it's good, as a matter of fact, I'm going back to what you originally said, this is the best way to explain the new growth is that year that we. Decided not to go through truth and taxation and left the certified rate, we actually had more property tax revenue because of new growth, and that's what I want to point out, it does come in, people pay their taxes, it comes in. As as a new growth, it wouldn't be as much as if you'd kept the, so my, because you have to think a little differently with property tax, because it's a revenue driven. Now, there is a. If you view it as a rate. So I gotta make sure I word this, if you view it as a rate, somebody will perceive out there because it fell down, there was income I could have had. I don't, I happen to personally don't view it that way, because I, you know, it's. It's water under the bridge, because you you didn't charge it, so you're not entitled to it, but. I do know that some people track it, so in your example, which I've heard people say that it's better to. You know, increase incrementally over time than a lump sum, and it's usually because somebody's gotten in trouble financially, because they have to all of a sudden. The revenue we've been generating isn't enough, so they weren't paying attention to it, and now we've got to increase it substantially, that's where you get in trouble. I think I I, so I happen to agree with that, it'd be much better to do small incremental ones than than large sums, but it is, it is, it's a. I understand the political side, and if I were a board member and put my hat on, I get the pressures you're under, because. As soon as you advertise it, it's out there. Going back to what I said, whether you go through truth and taxation or not, it's out there that the school district is thinking of raising taxes, and that's what's perceived out in the in the public, they they do view it as. You're asking for more money, that's why it's tough not to. You have to separate the rate from, hopefully I've worded that. Well, for you, I have to separate the rate from it, because it it's really the revenue that drives the formula.
Okay, Bob, and then Scott.
But but then you also, just just so I'm clarifying this, you know, I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around this, and and so. But you clarified, even if you went through truth and taxation, you could still adopt the certified rate after the truth and taxation hearing.
Yes, yeah. You can do that, I'm, I'm sure it was on the books, this is how I interpret, I'm sure it was on there, because. There has been probably an ugly meeting out there somewhere, and the board decided, you know, this isn't worth it. So you still have that option, yeah, to to ultimately decide.
He goes to the ugly meeting first.
Scott.
I I and I'll just express my feelings and then, you know, it is whatever, but. I I recognize that, and Lark, I appreciate the fact that you put in what the public notice would say, and, you know, that. If we adopted the flat rate or held the rate, that we would advertise that it's. An increase of on a three hundred thousand dollar house of forty two dollars and seventy four cents a year. And and again, my concern is that. There there's also the increase of the growth component that. That that house was a two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar house last year or a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, so. It's not just forty two dollars to that individual, it's it's. The other, the increased in value to that house as well, and so. The the real life person is going to be paying more than that, because nobody's home is still worth three hundred, it's increased, and so on a personal level. I I would be advocating for, I asked for it in the last meeting, and you know, and you said, you you came back with a three million dollar tax cut, and it would save ninety dollars a household. I don't know that I'm comfortably in that aggressive, but I would personally prefer the, you know, maybe a two million dollar and give sixty dollars back. And and that's where I would love to go, I suspect, and I'm realistic enough to know that the board probably isn't there. But, you know, that's that would be my feelings, but I, and if shy of that, I would be more comfortable adopting the the certified rate, and that's just in my two bits and. Let you all express yours too, because it's really is kind of a personal where your comfort level is, right?
Yeah, can I ask another question on this, I, because I I'm struggling with it, I. Even if we kept that rate the same and you did the zero, what it was that budget called? No tax increase. I'm just, I'm so sorry if we've said this twelve times. But if we do the no tax increase budget, people still say my taxes were increased. Because more money is going to the school district, but it's not because we raised them, it's because. The values of their homes increased, correct? So we still are seeing. Revenue because we've increased or because because our community is growing. Yeah, okay, but I do go back to what Bob's saying is. As one of the fastest growing districts in the state right now, I don't know, maybe there's a lot, I know that our whole state is growing. Two comments on it. When we've been. Not massacred, I don't want to say it like that, but when constituents come up and say, well, you guys didn't plan, you didn't do it, I mean, it's like what Bob said. We've got a lot coming, I think it's like a boulder coming down the mountain at us with growth. And so it's hard to say, ah, I'm not gonna capture growth this year, but then. We've had a really tough year. I'm. To raise taxes on a year like this is a hard thing for me to do, I think. As as much as I see what we need, I I'm struggling, I I actually am struggling on this decision, because. I am nervous about all this growth in a good way, I I I was talking to, who was I, a few of you, I've said. Hi, I'm I'm new here, I've been here eight years, I'm so grateful that I've been welcomed into Twilla County. And I can't wait to welcome more people in, and I know that's not a popular thing to say, but this is an amazing place to raise your kids. And. We have to be prepared for all these people coming. And our job is to educate kids, and do we have the funds to educate kids, so that's my struggle with it, but it's pandemic year, I don't want to raise taxes. So. Scott Rogers, oh, and then Julia.
Recognizing that I don't get to vote, I want to remind you that the the. The package that we've put together with the certified rate is very healthy for our employees, it keeps us competitive. I I I think we would be, I just want to clarify that. If we did accept the certified rate, it doesn't mean that we're not preparing for the future and that we don't have growth and additional funding and. and that we don't have growth and additional funding and a healthy capital reserve to address those kinds of issues. Personally, it feels a little tone deaf for us to consider an increase. Um, not just politically, but I, I think people really are out there hurting. And I think we feel very, I, I, I'd like to know what, I mean, certainly we defer to you. My recommendation would be to go with the certified rate. I think it's a good program. I think we're well funded. I think we've planned ahead. Um, and, uh, this is not the one and only last time to capture, you know, and deal with growth kind of a thing. It's just a delay. I, I'd love to know what Lark, in his professional opinion, would recommend. Um, we've used the flat rate, especially when we've struggled with funding and being competitive with our, you know, teachers' salaries, et cetera, but that's not the case. And certainly we have growth in other physical projects, but we also have, you know, $7 million of ESSER funding that, uh, to help buffer that and some healthy reserves. So it just, it, it, it just feels to me a little, um, I, um, you know, I, I would feel much more comfortable recommending to you the certified rate. But I get where you're coming from because there are points on both sides. But I'd love to hear Lark's recommendation.
Can I just really quick, can Julia go first and then you recommend? Thanks.
So, okay, I agree with what has been said. I, a pandemic year is really hard. The only concern that I have is inflation is, besides growth, inflation is going to be huge. And I just don't want us to roll back in terms of, because right now I do know we're healthy and I do know that we would be healthy for the next year, but with, with how much inflation, I don't, I mean, that's another one. How much that's going to take out of the budget, how, you know, supplies more, everything more. Um, our capital projects especially. You know, I just don't, I don't, I don't want to be strapped at that point and not have enough.
Camille, sorry, Lark, can I save you for last on that?
That's totally fine.
Because, uh.
So I just want to clarify one thing and I want to make sure I understand this as well. When you talk about values of people's homes, it's the assessed value, correct? So I don't, I mean, I know that values have increased, but I don't, I, I don't know. I'm still struggling with, um, how many houses are assessed at 300,000 plus out there? I think a lot of them are still kind of on the lower end. But with that being said, after last week, I talked to a lot of other school districts. Um, and a lot of them have said that when they did lower their rate, it was one of their biggest regrets. It was one of the hardest things to ever come back from because they fell so far behind. They couldn't catch up with everything else that they needed. And then also there.
That's happened in our district, or, you know, like 15 years ago.
Yeah.
It was huge when we, a couple of years didn't do it. And that's why we kind of adopted that policy and stayed consistent with it. Because, yeah, it hurts when it goes the opposite way.
And then the other thing is, um, that I think we also need to be aware of is talking to other school districts that are looking to bond this year on building a new high school. Um, they're looking at the 160 million instead of 90 million because of the inflation and the prices for construction. So I know we're healthy. I know we have a lot of really great things right now, but we also have those reserves dedicated for our new schools. Um, but there's higher, um, wages for classified employees. There's higher wages for our teachers. We have a lot of things coming up. And I know, I, I, believe me, I, out of anybody, I don't want to raise property taxes, like that hurts. But I also, as a district, don't want to hurt us and put us back and farther behind than where we could be. I want to keep us in a healthy situation that we're moving forward.
Um, I'm going to make one comment and then Scott, is that okay? Um, when, so there's the, uh, flat tax, which is what you've, everything's good on that. And then the.
Certified is the.
Okay. The increase was, and I, when I say only, was 1.4 million?
Total was 1.6.
Oh, 1.6.
Four to the, uh, capital project fund.
Okay, but 1.6. So when we're talking about the perception of the pandemic and the tough year everyone's had and to then come and raise taxes, and it gets us 1.4 million, that's a lot of money. But what's our budget for, what's our, I mean, it's a lot of money. I mean, how much is that?
What percent is that of our budget?
Does that make sense? Like, that's like, not very much. So for us to increase taxes right now, does it really change our budget that much? I mean, that ESSER fund is more than, right?
But we don't know everything we can use that ESSER fund for. What if we can't use it for a school or, you know what I mean?
I agree, but, you know, I remember a lot of, like, when someone was like, well, it's only $20,000. And I'm like, $20,000 for whatever? And, but when you're looking at a budget this size that our district runs, to raise taxes for 1.6 million, is that worth the heartache of raising taxes? I don't know. That's, that's what I'm asking. What, you know?
It's a 0.6 of percent of the budget, if you're curious.
It's $3 a month you're raising taxes.
To a person?
For a house. $42 a year or $3 a month for a 300,000 assessed value home.
And we're getting 0.6% of the budget increase.
So that we can pay certified more or go towards a bus garage or what, or even have more in reserves in case our high school costs $130 million.
But.
I agree. Oh, Scott.
The thing that's not accurate is pay, pay certified teachers more because there was only 132,000 in there to, that's not going to do much.
Uh, Scott, Brian, sorry, you're up.
But, but keep in mind, a million dollars isn't going to make or break all those things you just listed, Camille.
That's what I'm saying.
And a million dollars there, but it's 40, $40 if their house is valued the same today as it was last year. And we don't know what that difference is, but I'm confident to say that their house is worth more than it was last year. So it's not just $40.
Right. Well, it's $40 on an assessed value of a $300,000 home.
If, if their home was 300,000 last year.
Right.
But there's also that inflation component that's also being captured. And, and so for any individual, it's going to be more than, than 40. I don't know how much more. I just think, I, I feel really strongly that we have an obligation to several parties in, in all of our decisions. We have responsibilities to our, to our employees. And we need to make sure that they're being fairly and appropriately compensated. We have an obligation to our students to provide schools and, and supplies. But the other really important party in this, and sometimes we forget as a board, is that the public. And sometimes, and a lot of times, that's not necessarily somebody that has a student in the schools. It's, it's those people on fixed incomes or it's those people that are just starting out that don't have children. And, and there's others that, there's other parties that don't necessarily, and sometimes we focus on those first two legs of the stool and we forget about the, the public as a whole. And those taxpayers are the same ones that supported us, at least the majority of them in building that school. And I think in good faith, to Melissa's point, it's only 1.6 million dollars. It's 0.6% of the budget. Um, the budget that Lark's presented tonight, um, had $3 million worth of salary increases billed on top. And that's with the certified rate. And so it's not like, and most of those individuals out there are not seeing dramatic pay increases this year. And so it feels like we're saying we're, we're, we're sensitive to you and we'll just, we'll just adopt. And I want to lower it, but adopt the certified rate, you know? And then that's just my, I, I, don't, don't.
And I, and I do agree with you, like, we definitely, I mean, I, I want to be aware of the taxpayer and I'm not saying that, but I just also want to be aware of, you know, we're in the business of education and doing what is best for our students. And I want to make sure that when we say, you know, we're going to build a new school or we're going to do these things, that then in a couple of years, we're not kicking ourselves saying, oh, we should have. And I think it's important to hear the other, hear Lark's recommendation. I appreciated the superintendent's and I think that's important as well.
Bob?
Well, like I said earlier, I wasn't proposing, I'm still not proposing anything. I, I wanted to have the discussion because, uh, I think it's important and I think we're doing our obligation by having the discussion of the different rates. Uh, I think if you just jump in and you're saying this is, this is the rate or this is, this is the rate. And, and I do appreciate the staff's recommendation. I'm not, I'm not discounting the staff's recommendation. But, and I, you know, I just want you to know, I, you know, I'm like everybody else. I pay the taxes as well and I'm sensitive to taxes because I'm not a big fan of tax increases myself. But I also know for a fact in talking to people in the last week, people are concerned if you're not planning ahead. And I think, and I think there's, I think there's a sensitive area or a break, a breakpoint there that you have, you, you can't just, you have to keep planning because, as Melissa said, whether we want it to grow or not to grow, Tooele County is going to grow. And I'm not going to voice where I'm at, where I, what I'd like it to see, okay? Whether it's going to grow or not grow, then it's still growing. And, you know, let's be honest, there's very few factors that can limit growth in a, in a county. You know, maybe a drought can somewhere along the line, who knows? But, uh, so it's going to grow. And my concern is, it, and, and the only reason I ask the question is, when do you come back and say, we should have kept the rate flat? Or now we've got to ask for bonds or we've got to do these different things to, in order to keep up with growth? Because as I drive in from the south of the county every day, the south end of the county is growing. And it's, it's growing south, you know? Uh, I hear of, I hear of different housing projects that are being talked about that I never thought I would see homes in. And so, you know, it's growing. I just came down through Allen's territory, you know, Mormon Trail. I don't even recognize the Mormon Trail anymore. So when, you know, the growth is coming, so how do, my biggest concern is just managing the growth and being able to be fiscally responsible to do that for the growth. So.
I think this conversation is super important because, oh, you know, whatever people end up voting, whether or not it's the, uh, no tax increase or the flat tax increase, um, it's part of educating our public on, on what it is as well. Because I didn't understand it till I got on the school board, well, even till over the, you know, it's taken me a few years to figure this out. And, um, it's, it's super tricky to explain, even if we do this no tax increase. People will be paying more because our property value is assessed more. And, um, it's not because we raised taxes, it's because our, uh, property is worth more. And, um, I, I think I'm ready to.
Melissa, could I, could I just, just illustrate something? Um, I understand growth is definitely an issue. Um, the way I look at the certified rate or, you know, the tax rate is more of an operational budget and not a growth, building new schools budget. Because quite frankly, it would take you at 1.6 million, it would take you 20 years to save up for a school. Now, we all know that we're going to need another new school beyond these three. Uh, the way the funding formula works in Utah, when you have that kind of growth, it's bonds that pay for. Most districts don't have any high growth. Uh, the luxury of, oh, we've got all that in savings. Now, I get it. Uh, you know, it's a million dollars, but what I'm saying is that, that million six, you know, it takes 20 years. We're going to have other decisions to make long before on how to deal with growth. And it's going to be around bonding and maybe refinancing and when bonds drop off. It's not going to really make a significant difference, uh, in our growth preparations.
But it will on perception, which I think is important to raise, right? Is that what you're saying?
It has the potential of doing both for perception. Uh, the perception of, gosh, you're, you don't really need it, but you're, you're going for more money because of growth. Or the, you know, are you going to live within your budget like we've had to? I mean, it has a potential being either way, but I'm just saying, we're going to have to deal with growth above and beyond our tax rate because there's no way to build, it wasn't designed to build buildings.
Lark, thank you for being patient.
Oh, no problem. I, would you like another exam? I, I thought of a better way to explain new growth. Can I do that before I, because my recommendation, I'm going to give the legal, legal advice that they always say it depends. See if Alan laughs at that. Okay, but, uh, new growth, I thought of a better way to use it in, in the example. I wanted to make clear, um, when I say they back out new growth, the, the state tax commission actually tracks it as brand new growth. And I, what I mean by that is it's not growth and assessed valuation. It's brand new homes or units that are being built in a given year that are going to become on the tax books the following year. Um, actually, I guess they're a year behind technically, but that's what they consider the, the new growth. And, uh, I, I wanted it because, because going back to, to Scott's example, and I know there's a lot of moving parts in there and factors, but the intent is that in those two homes example, that two home example, um, that if your valuation happened to rise with everybody else, is exactly what it'd be. That's what the logic is by excluding new growth, that you would pay the exact same as you did the prior year. That's the hundred dollar example. Now, of course, if you have two pieces of property sitting next to one another, one increases more because it's a valuable piece of property and the other one decreases. Of course, they're going to, now one's higher and one's lower. That's, that's now you're getting into individual things. But I wanted to clarify that new growth isn't just assessed valuation growth either. It's, it's only those new properties are tracking. Hopefully that'll help as you think about it and explain it to, to everybody. But really, as far as a recommendation, I, I've been wrong before and I'll, I'll admit that, you know, I, 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 that's why I said I believe you know your constituents better than I do and could answer that because I could see it either way. I, I say that because last year personally, as you know, I made the recommendation, I don't think you can do a tax increase and sell bonds in the same year. And boy, I was wrong. So I don't want to, I don't want to tell you you can't, but, uh, but you know, you know, your, people you're around you and how they're feeling. Um, to me, it boils down to, I feel like we've got a good budget with the certified tax rate. As superintendent said, that if, that, um, if there is feeling that we don't want to go through that this year, then you can do that. But if there is feeling that, you know, that, that, that's a minimal increase, we can do it. You know, I, I'll leave that decision up to you guys because I, we can go either way. It's not going to make us or break us in this given year. So, yeah, sorry, it's depends.
Bob?
I'll make the motion then to go with the staff recommendation of going with the certified rate, no, the no tax increase. Uh, and including in that motion that we include, because I know Lark had asked for that to be included in the motion about the discussion of the.
Salary increases?
The salary increases that the staff is recommending. And so I'll include that into that motion.
I need a second if someone wants to.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been, um, motioned by Bob, seconded by Alan, that we adopt the proposed budget no tax increase for fiscal year 2022.
I would recommend you use the certified rate. Don't, don't refer to it no tax.
Oh, okay, sorry. I was just, I was just reading that, that presentation. Okay. Okay, the, uh, proposed budget using the certified tax rate. Um, with the new money for the salary increase? Is there any discussion to that motion?
Yes. Uh, I, you know, I agree with, with the concept and, 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 and I'm still concerned. I want you to know I am concerned, but I, I do agree with some of the speakers that have talked about, you know, the year with the pandemic and, and things like that. But I also, I also believe that we have to support our, you know, the staff recommendation and also not just in the certified rate, but also in the proposal of the increase of salaries. Uh, because I think that's, I think that's important to us. Uh, that will make us, you know, I think one of the big goals have been, you know, even before I got on the board, uh, was to. even before I got on the board, uh, was to stay competitive so that we could keep people in our district. And I think that allows us to do that. And so I, that's why I would propose that. Uh, with the caveat, I do want you to know I am concerned. I am, I am concerned that we're going to come back a year from now or whatever and ask for a tax increase. So.
Bob, I'll echo your, uh, statement. I, I feel the same way, but. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Then I have to close everyone out? Do we do a? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Good night.